It is still six o'clock, Councilman Hayes, so I'm not too late yet. But, um, no, it says six o'clock. Um, it is 6:00 PM, it's October 19th, 2021, and this is the meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We are officially called to order, and we're going to begin this meeting as we do each meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. I have to ask you all to stand with me. Councilwoman Alexander is going to offer the invocation, and Councilwoman George is going to lead us in the pledge.
In every heart pray. Turned grace of God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, your Lord, for allowing us to be here today. Our prayer, God, that everything we say, everything we do tonight will be pleasing and fair in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, in every heart said, "Amen."
Amen. Please run it, I send the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Ketchel is not with us this evening, but Ms. Alexander is going to call the world for us.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Uh, here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Finn.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilwoman Love.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Um, the next item before you is the approval of minutes. You have the minutes for the September 21st, 2021 meeting and the October 5th, 2021 meeting.
I'll show for second.
Have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. The minutes are approved. We now go to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that you can speak to any item that is on the agenda. I will tell you that there are numerous public, or two public hearings. The first one is item number one, and this is administration enforcement of temporary use occupancy permits. And then there's public hearing number two, which is short-term rental units, essentially. There's also several dangerous building and show cause hearings. If you're here for one of those, those are items three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's it. So, i-if you're here for any of those, you may also speak, you may speak under those. But right now, it's public hear, or, or, public recognition on agenda-related items. For anything else that's on the agenda, we ask that you come forward, you introduce yourself, give us your name and your address. There is also a time at the end of the meeting that you can speak to anything that is not on the agenda, and so you'll have that opportunity at the end of this meeting. But this time, public hearing or, or, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
Pascal Jovens, 1335 Long Hollow Pike in Gallatin. These are, on the agenda, two things are important, the survey on the classification of salary and a raise for employees. Classification and salary, hopefully, I would like to hear you say that we'll make it public and we'll reply it because, um, there was one was made in 2019, hopefully you read it, about the fire and the police, and nothing has been done since. Unfortunately, we're paying now. There's a lot of officer living, there's a lot of fire guards living. I just read a few things from that. They talk about average minimum in a region. About the firemen, they are concerned with the minimum salaries of a current salary range in that forty percent of the benchmark position are below the average market minimum. From the data, it would appear that some of the starting salary have fallen below the average. Position of concern are firefighter, battalion chief, captain, and training officer. Forty percent of the fire department full-time position are below the average market rate, and that was in 2019. The current fire chief has specific concern of comparability of the city's salaries to the city of Hendersonville. Without incentive for degrees of percentage increase for certain certification, sixty-seven percent of the city position are below the city of Hendersonville. The fire compensation system was designed as a pure step system. Performance and incentive pays are not considered. And it goes on. Now, on the police side. Compare ratio compared to the police department around. Eighteen percent at between zero and thirty-nine percent, sixty percent at between forty and forty-four, fifty percent is the average. So, almost all the department is below the average salary was in 2019, already below the average salary. Eighteen percent of the po-position are below the acceptable rate. However, there are sixty-four percent of the position that are in the lower portion of the acceptable range, so if the schedule is not adjusted, eighty-two percent would be below the average market rate. Eighty-two percent, and that was in 2019. Nothing has been done since, so I figure that, you know, these people are professional, they know what they're doing. We have eighty-two percent of the position in the police department who are below average And it goes on and on and on. The summary of that report say, "The city has not consistently maintained the police and fire salary schedules. As a result, a number of the position, as well as the salary schedule, have fallen under the market. The original salary schedule built in 2015 was an attempt to gain a consistent structure within the city. It is advantageous to restructure the fire and police schedules in order to reduce rank compression and provide for some incentive pay where appropriate. This change, if maintained by the city, should provide a competitive structure for above the fire and police department." That was 2019, okay? I'm wondering why nothing has been done to follow that. So, again, uh, we're gonna have a new survey, and I want, I would like to have an assurance from you guys that the survey is gonna be follow, and everything's gonna be put so we can keep our employees, keep our fire people, keep our police officers. And I think that, you know, Mayor, thank you, I appreciate the ten percent raise for everybody, but I think for these guys, it's not enough. I appreciate your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items, now would be your time. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. This is public recognition on agenda-related items.
Good evening, everybody. It's Patrick Reeners at 317 Malone Drive, and...
Sorry.
You gonna start my time?
You're fine.
All right. Uh, I just gotta make a public comment. I really didn't look at the agenda tonight, but I, I didn't know. Thanks for the ten percent raise you gave the people from, I don't have any information about this issue, but it's still about the agenda, and I don't know how anybody, I wouldn't come to you justifying an increase in raise to a city that's probably triple tax rate, more income a living. So, remember when you got someone coming up here, some stuff you just gotta let go of one ear and out the other if you can understand it even. All right? Thanks for the raise, though, Mayor.
I'm Tanner Morrell from 1010 Candace Street, and I want to thank you guys for addressing the short-term rentals, and a lot of cities, um, either ban them outright, and it makes it difficult for people like me who provide shelter for traveling nurses, professionals, families that are building homes and have nowhere to stay for a few months, and they don't want to live with the in-laws. So, there's, um, a lot of need right now for medium and short-term rentals with all the housing going up, and that's what I do, is provide that for nurses, doctors, and other professionals moving to the area. Uh, so, a lot of technology has come out in the last few years, like, um, there's detectors for smoke alarm, uh, sorry, for tobacco smoke, for marijuana smoke, there's detectors for noise, there's detectors for cell phones, and there's a lot of things we can do to prevent parties in real time, so that, um, because I know that Airbnb has a bad connotation with a lot of city council people around the country, and so, there's a lot of things that most responsible hosts are doing to prevent parties, and that's what I do in all my units. It costs a extra two or three hundred bucks per unit, but we can squash parties, uh, very fast if they were to happen, and we do a lot to prevent them in the first place. So, I want to thank you guys for, um, for regulating this, first of all, and doing so in a, in a smart way. Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that information. You told me something I didn't know, how interesting, so, yeah, excellent. Anyone else wishing to speak to any item that's on the evening's agenda? Seeing none, I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed, and move on now to Mayor's comments. I do have just a few things to go over. Um, I'll remind you again, just because there are a lot of people here, and hopefully there's some people watching the meeting as well, there are getting ready to be a lot of, um, fall festival and Halloween events, um, so a couple of those that are coming up, the Gallatin Civic Center is having their pumpkin splash, um, on the 23rd, which is the Saturday. Friends of Bledsoe Creek State Park is also having a trunk or treat, that's from 6 until 8:00 PM. On Sunday, there's a drive-through trunk or treat at Paul State Community College. Um, there's a trick, there's trick-or-treat on the square that happens every year, they're doing it this year on Friday, the 29th, that happens from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM. Historic Rosemont is holding a trick-or-treat event from 5:00 to 8:00 PM on that Friday. And then, um, the Gallatin Farmers Market is going to have a Halloween event on the 30th from 9:00 to 1:00, and, let's see, Farmers Market open 9:00 to 1:00, Halloween events from 10:00 until 12:00. So, from 10:00 until 12:00 would be the Halloween events. And then there's also a trunk or treat at Gallatin First United Baptist Church. I'm sure there's tons that we don't have on our list that we typically pull from the amazing Chamber Calendar, but all kinds of events happening in our community. Also, I want to mention that Paul State, um, Children's Theater is presenting Alice in Wonderland this Friday and Saturday. There's a performance Friday at 7:00, and then Saturday, um, and then outdoor show at 4:00 PM, so that's pretty interesting. This coming Monday is the 25th, is the State of the City Address at Epic Events Center. Um, it's the Chamber Luncheon where we do that annually. I do want to mention that Councilman Overton's birthday is Saturday, the 30th, and I also want to, um, offer my apologies, I did not mention David Brown's birthday last week, and I think I hurt some feelings with that, and I also miss Connie Flood's birthday. So, I may ditch birthdays in the future, as much as I like to acknowledge them, I certainly don't like missing any. So, um, those are kind of the events and birthdays. Also, I wanted to share with you, we get one of these every year, but you probably don't know this, but this is from the comptroller, and it says, it's a certificate, and we get one every year, and it says, "This certificate is proudly presented to get City of Gallatin in recognition of its timely adoption of a balanced budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021." And the letter that accompanies it says that our budget was adopted on or before the fiscal year, we were, it was filed in their office within fifteen days of adoption, there were no issues of concern during their review of the budget, and our local government is not under the oversight of the Water and Wastewater Financing Board or the Utility Management Review Board. Um, amazingly, every city in the state does not get one of these, um, not a lot do, so we are grateful that our finance director and our department heads and, and this council all work together to get our budget passed in a timely way each year. It's important and valued and appreciated by the comptroller, apparently, so. Finally, I do have a proclamation to present, and I'm going to ask that Rodrick Glover with HomeSafe join me at the podium. Um, this is something very important that I'm excited to share with you. I'll go ahead and take it while he's got his phone unlocked, and then you can sit down. We'll take a picture, and then I'll read it. Yeah, thank you. Um, so ladies and gentlemen, this is Rodrick Glover, he is the outreach and volunteer coordinator, am I correct?
Correct.
With HomeSafe. And we are here in recognition of National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'm certainly going to invite him to say a few words, but I do want to share this proclamation because it's important, and I think it will help bring attention to something that they're working against every single day. It says, "Whereas domestic violence impacts women, men, and children of every age, background, and belief, and whereas one in three women have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner, and whereas seventy-two percent of all murder-suicides involved an intimate partner, ninety-four percent of the victims of these crimes were women, and whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we reaffirm dedication to forging an America where no one suffers the hurt and hardship that domestic violence causes, and we recommit to doing everything in our power to uphold the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse. And whereas HomeSafe, a nonprofit organization in Gallatin, is the only domestic prevention program serving Sumner, Robertson, and Wilson Counties, and whereas HomeSafe's mission is to provide safety and support to individuals impacted by domestic and sexual violence, foster survivors, survivors' healing and empowerment, and to promote nonviolence and social justice in our community. And whereas HomeSafe offers many services to include a shelter, court advocacy, individual counseling, and therapy to victims and children who have witnessed domestic violence, support groups, case management services, emergency transportation and financial assistance, awareness and prevention programs for youth and adults in the community, and training for other community agencies. HomeSafe has a helpline available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to offer assistance. And whereas the City of Gallatin joins HomeSafe in its efforts to bring awareness to domestic violence, now therefore, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of the City of Gallatin, ask citizens to join me in recognizing October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon our community to observe the month, and urge our citizens to speak out against domestic violence and support local efforts to assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing they need."
Yes, I love it, I love it! I'm motivated!
I feel like you can say better than that.
Oh, I want to thank Mayor Paige Brown for that. That's exciting and motivated to me. Um, what we do, we really take...
Use your mic so they can hear you.
Okay. Can you go here? One thing that we want to do with, at HomeSafe, is take the ladies that have been broken, beat up, damaged, tried, people trying to rip them down and tell them they're nothing, but our thing is to catch them. Where they are. Pull them up and teach them how to love themselves again. Teach them how to believe in themselves again. Teach them how to dream again. And we, as a community, and I love something, I love it, but we all have to do our part. And for us to walk away, when you see someone hurt, when you see someone's in trouble, and walk away and say nothing, that's not good. We have that 24-hour line, and this is the number. All they do is call it. You don't have to, have to do anything, you just give them the number. But, our thing is to teach them how to believe in themselves again, how to love themselves. So, we have to learn, in order to give love, you gotta receive love, but you gotta have love within you. And all of us have to work on ourselves and figure out what do they need to change. My name is Rodrick Glover, better known as the Motivator, and whatever you do, be great.
That was motivating and inspiring. I, um, I appreciate your passion for what you do, and I respect the work of HomeSafe, and I thank you all. Um, I am going to share the hotline, just, um, I wish people would write this down and keep it on you, and if someone might need it, share it with them. And I like what you said, let's take care of each other.
Right, you gotta look out for each other. Whatever y'all do, be great, okay? Well, play, buddy. Pleasure to be here today, thank you.
That concludes Mayor's comments, and I, and we don't usually get that kind of spirit in here, so that's lovely. Um, so Mayor's comments is concluded, we'll move on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance 02109-58. Councilman Overton, you are recognized for it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order, this is public hearing, ordinance on, from City Gallup, Sumner County, Tennessee, amending zoning ordinance for the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, Article 2.00, Language Definitions, and Article 15, Administration Enforcement of Temporary Use Occupancy Permits, authorizing provisions to be made to the, to the zoning ordinance, repealing conflict of ordinance, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
It's a public hearing on ordinance 02109-58. You may speak to this at this time if you so desire. Seeing no one indicating they wish to speak, we'll declare the public hearing on ordinance 02109-58 closed, and item number two is public hearing on ordinance 02109-59, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is all of, Gall, City Gallup, Sumner County, Tennessee, amending Article 2, Language Definitions, Article 3, Use Classifications, Article 6, Provisions of Residential Districts, Article 7, Provisions of Mixed-Use Districts, Article 8, Provisions of Commercial Districts, Article 11, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, Article 11, Supplemental District Regulations, and Designated Section 12.02, Short-Term Rental Units, and Article 15, Administration of Enforcement, and Gallatin Zoning Ordinance, repealing conflict of ordinance, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
Public hearing is now open on the ordinance 02109-59. If anyone would like to speak, they may come forward at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Hollow Pike. So, about the short-term rentals, the Airbnb regulations, um, I, I also agree with the, uh, with the young man who spoke earlier that we do need regulations for, um, this in the city because we're probably gonna be seeing more and more of them in the future. Um, just with the, um, the inflation and the housing prices going up, I think probably people will be looking for, um, some creative ways to make more money with their houses. I, um, I think that regulations are necessary, but there was one thing specifically that I, I don't like that I read, um, and that was the size of the bedrooms, um, and the fact that they're being limited to two people per bedroom. I think, so basically, it says the bedrooms need to be a minimum of a hundred and forty square feet, which is about twelve by twelve. The average bedroom size in America is a hundred and thirty-two square feet, which is eleven by twelve. So, I believe that we're discriminating against average bedroom sizes by having a minimum requirement of a hundred and forty square feet. We're discriminating against average room sizes and average people who have average room sizes in their houses. So, I don't like the idea of having an actual size. Um, we're already gonna have to have it inspected, so the inspector can say if the house is something that is habitable for this sort of a thing. So, I don't like the idea of putting a minimum room size, or also for two per bedroom. I mean, for example, what if there's a family with three kids, and they're gonna rent a little cabin, and it has two bedrooms? You know, so you're really discriminating against families that have three kids and they want to rent a cabin with two bedrooms. So, it's, it's just too picky, I think, on that particular rule. Um, and then the other thing, um, it kind of discriminates against things that are kind of unique and cool, because not everything is just a regular house with bedrooms. Um, for example, several years ago, Pascal and I stayed in a, like, a short-term rental in France that was a treehouse, and it was one room, and it was a really cool place that had several short-term rental on the property, and this one that we stayed in was a treehouse, and it didn't have a closet, and, you know, like, the, just, so I think we're discriminating against, like, cool things, and also, like, a-average size rooms, which is probably not a good idea. And then the other thing, too, the repark, the required parking, one per bedroom, but in our, our building code, I don't know it, is that something that we require to have one parking spot per bedroom? So, if that's not the case, then we're discriminating against a lot of homes and a lot of people who might want to only do this, like, once or twice a year, you know, like, not even doing it full-time, but just want to maybe, like, when they go on vacation, put their home up for Airbnb, because I do have a friend who does that once a year. So, um, anyway, I just think that it's a good idea to have some regulations, because we don't want to just have party houses, but we don't want to also discriminate, discriminate against just average people who might want to use this, um, as something that they want to do. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak under this public hearing, you may come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll declare public hearing on ordinance 02109-59 closed. Item number three, we're moving into the dangerous building complaints and show cause hearings, and this evening, Kevin Black is here for Mr. Stewart, our building official, and he and Ms. Haime Colley will work through these. So, the first one is for 656 Chambers Street. Yes, and the first thing I would like to ask, is there anyone here representing the owner for 656 Chambers Street? Is the owner or a representative present?
I'm here on his behalf because of he, he has health issues.
Okay, then you won't be able to vote, because you'll have a conflict if you're gonna give testimony.
Okay, but he wants, uh, wanted me to say on, on his behalf that, uh, you know, he, he's gonna tear the house down, uh, but he's asking for at least sixty to ninety days to do so himself, or if the fire department wanted to use the house for a demo or, uh, fire test or something, I don't know whether we do that anymore, that he would like to offer to the fire department to do that, and then he would be liable to clean it up himself.
Okay. All right, and now we will hear from, uh, Mr. Black about this home and the conditions there. So, first, just state your name and title for the record, please.
Kevin Black, Inspector with the City of Gallatin Codes Department.
And the address of the property that is the hearing that we're on right now is...
656 Chambers Street.
And first, I want to ask that you give some testimony about the initial attempts that Codes made, um, not for the show cause hearing, but the initial attempts when the Codes official determined the first time that the building was dangerous.
The building was first posted dangerous on March 6th of 2018.
2018?
Yes.
Okay. And have you had any response from the owner after that initial posting?
I received a call... I received a call, and it was quite a while back, before we sent, it was probably about the time we sent the certified letter on February of 2020. And he said he, at the time, there was, he called, and we told him it was declared a dangerous building, but there was really no other response.
Okay. And after that, you asked this council to issue a show cause notice and complaint, and that has been done. And I know that letters were sent, certified and regular mail. Do you know if those were served?
They were unclaimed.
The certified was unclaimed. The regular mail, however, was not returned to the sender, is that correct?
Not that I know of, no.
And since that went out, have you had any response from the owner?
No, no response.
In your opinion, as the designee for the codes official for the City of Gallatin, is the property at 656 Chambers Street a dangerous building and unfit for human habitation?
It is a dangerous building, yes.
Okay. Can you tell the council why you have deemed it to be dangerous, and list the reasons out of the municipal code?
Well, due to Section 108 of the Property Maintenance Code, the building is dilapidated, unsafe, uninhabitable, and as you can see from the pictures, and let me say one thing, the pictures that I put for tonight are recent pictures, they're not from the initial postings. These pictures were all taken within the last two months, so you can see current conditions of the dilapidation. The roof is collapsing.
Okay. And the show cause notice that went out says that the building has been deemed unfit for human occupation for the following reasons: Structure is unsecured, unsanitary, and unsafe; there's insufficient stormwater drainage; garbage and rubbish accumulation; rodent infestation; broken and water-damaged wall framing; broken and water-damaged roof rafter, roof rafters; broken and water-damaged roof decking; broken, missing, and water-damaged roof shingles; broken and water-damaged windows, seals, and screens; broken and water-damaged doors and frames; broken, missing, and water-damaged stairs and landings; broken decks and porches; broken, missing, and water-damaged eaves and overhangs; broken, missing, and water-damaged soffits. Is all of that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And none of that has been repaired, is that correct?
Nothing. This is the current condition of the property, as you see it.
Would you like to show the pictures, the current pictures that you have, to the council at this point?
Initial pictures are in your original packets, these, and like I said, these are all current pictures that I took within the last two months. That's the back of the house, which you can't really see anymore.
Okay. You have any other testimony you think that the council needs to hear tonight on this matter?
Well, we would, since our certified mail was unclaimed, would you rec, did you wanna recommend that we post this in the paper for 30 days and defer this?
I had planned to recommend that, but now we have a representative from the owner, he's asked that.
Our recommendation is that the property be, take, just dismantle and remove the house.
Okay. And in your opinion, can the property be repaired for less than 50% of its value?
No.
So based on your testimony and the record before the council, your recommendation is to dismantle and remove the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And we've already heard from the owner's representative, Councilman Alexander, gave some information from the owner, so at this point, we will open it up for council. Councilman Overton?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that this building, located at 656 Chambers Street, is dangerous and unfit for human occupation or used based upon a staff report and a dangerous building complaint, show cause notice, the entire record before us, and the testimony presented tonight. The owner shall have 60 days to either dismantle or remove the building, bring the building in compliance with applicable codes, or the city shall demolish and remove the building with all costs assessed against the property owner as a lien, and order shall be issued to that effect. I'll make that in form of a motion.
Say 60 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilman Overton. Second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Note and abstention by Councilman Alexander abstained. Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to Item Number Four, which is Dangerous Building Complaint and Show Cause Hearing for 647 Pace Street. And do we have an owner or a representative present? Black, will you state your name again for the record?
Yes, Michael Neuzer.
Okay. Okay. We can go ahead and, usually we hear from the city first, but we'll go ahead and have you, if you wanna speak, that's fine. That's okay. I'd just like for you to be able to hear everything before you give any information. So go ahead and state your name and title again for the record.
Kevin Black, Inspector, City of Gallatin Codes Department.
And you're the designee for the codes official tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the address at the property, will you give that for the record, please?
647 Pace Street.
Okay. And will you give some testimony as to how the, what the codes department and official did initially when they determined this was a dangerous building?
Initially posted it in, on March 2nd of 2020.
2020. And did you hear from the owner as a result of that?
Not at the time, no.
Okay. And thereafter, did the codes department ask that this council issue a show cause notice?
That is correct.
And do you know if that show cause notice was served by a certified mail?
It was served and received by certified mail.
And did you get a response from the owner at that point? Can you go ahead and give some testimony to the council as to why you deemed this building to be dangerous, please?
It is unsecured, all three, there's actually three buildings on the property in the packet. I believe there's initial photos of all three buildings, and it's unsecured, it's open, the roofs are collapsing inside, it's open to vagrants, children playing in there, it's a public danger.
Okay. And the show cause notice and complaint lists the following reason: Structure is unsecured, unsanitary, and unsafe; there's cracked peeling paint and plaster; deteriorating accessory structure; garbage and rubbish, rubbish accumulation; no address; water-damaged floor joists; broken, missing, and water-damaged ceiling joists; broken and water-damaged wall framing; broken and water-damaged roof rafters; broken and water-damaged roof decking and shingles; holes and crack in the slab; holes in the brick; broken and water-damaged windows, seals, and screens; broken and water-damaged doors and frames; broken and water-damaged insulation and sheet rock; broken and water-damaged eaves and overhangs; broken and water-damaged soffits. Is all of that still correct?
All except for the floor joists. It's on a concrete slab.
Okay.
So the floor joist portion is not correct, but it does have broken concrete slab.
Okay. And to your knowledge, has any of that been repaired?
No.
And is it your opinion, as the codes official designee, that the property at 647 Pace Street is a dangerous building and unfit for human occupation?
Yes, it is.
Do you wanna, at this time, show the pictures that you have to council? This is 647 Pace Street.
Those are the, the three or four current pictures.
And are there other pictures that are in?
Other pictures are in the packets, the initial pictures.
Is there any other testimony that you want to give council tonight?
Well, we would like to recommend that the new owner, who is gonna speak, present a plan and obtain a bill, obtain his permits within 30 days.
Okay. Will you repeat that? I had a little trouble hearing you.
Okay. We would like, sorry about that. We would like to recommend that the new owners, who has a representative here to speak tonight, submit their plans and obtain permits within 30 days to take care of this property.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, if you'll come forward and just give us your name and address for the record, please, and then you can give council any testimony.
Michael Neuzer, representing 647 Pace Street.
Okay.
I am an owner's rep. I was just on a binded agreement on October 6th, so two weeks ago, representing the owners. I know them, I work with some other properties, but they called me, so coming into the situation. 100% agree with the condition of it, the intent is to demolish the property.
Okay.
They claim they didn't necessarily receive it last year, I know it's been a while, we worked through that, but 100%. October 6th, I was engaged through an agreement, I called that day to the codes, and had a meeting with Mr. Stewart and Mr. Black on October 8th. We walked through, we do have a demo plan from an architect, we do have, we engaged a civil engineering group that did initial planning for the concept, to demolish all this and put up six townhouses. So it's informal, not informal planning yet, but that is the goal. We have demo specs. In the last week, I have found three contractors that are interested in demolishing it from a standpoint, but I have not received their proposals yet, from that standpoint. We have also learned that I have not pulled a permit for the abatement, but one of the contractors said there probably is asbestos tile in there, so I've gotta go through the process to see what has to happen. So that's one of the reasons we could pull the permits, it's just the timing of getting the demo done, from that standpoint.
And do you think that you can do that within 30 days?
Pull permits, yes. I can get proposals and pull permits. Honestly, with what they're telling me, it may end up being three or four months before the building is all gone. The goal is to take it to the slab, get the plant, at the same time, get the planning approved for the townhouses. So tearing, tearing up the lot, the slab, all that piece that's left would, would occur with the new construction, but in this case, it would be a cleared lot, is the goal.
Right. Thank you. And we'll open this up for council, if you have any questions.
Sounds like if their plan is to demo it, that there's no sense in setting a 30-day to get plans to do something different, so.
Well, we do need to set a deadline to pull permits, so that we're progressing.
Right, but why wouldn't you do 90 or 120 days for demolition, because he says they weren't planning for?
That wasn't my recommendation, that was the codes recommendation.
Yeah, I don't care, I don't care. But I felt like the codes recommendation was based on them, like, rehabbing the property. It wasn't.
Demo permits.
Okay. Never mind. I was drawing my comments. If there's asbestos, that's gonna have to be handled differently than just a demo.
Exactly right. And so we have, we're gonna get a quote from the same contractors in order to do that. We've got to get the study and the remediation done from those contractors. Exactly right. It's gonna take a little bit of time.
Is there a motion from this council?
Well, I just want, wanna say, for the benefit of the public who may not know, that's the, that building is Bishop Swanson Old Nursing Home, and I'm just curious about how long, how much time you think you, the process, are you asking this council for?
For the full demolition? Is that, is that the question?
At least to get the codes off your back, or get the city off your back, if you will, you know.
So I think pulling the permit, as soon as I get the proposals, I find out what the abatement process is. We've gotta get the, the actual codes, abatement individual, to go visit it, look at it, require it. I believe that is required, but I think we need to follow the process.
Getting the demolition permit.
Kevin?
Up to the mic, Kevin.
Come up to the mic, please.
Getting the demolition permit and getting the demolition done will eliminate the public nuisance aspect of it.
So, I need to ask Kevin one question. Kevin, you, you feel like that if we give him 90 days, that it's fair time, or 120? Tell, tell me, I know you want it gone in 30, but obviously, you can't do that in 30.
No, he just wanted the permits in 30 days. I, I'm the one that's confused everything, Councilman.
At least the, for him to obtain the permits, to, to begin the demolition.
30 days for a permit, is your recommendation?
Right.
Are there other questions?
No. I'll make a motion to give him 30 days to pull the permits for the demolition.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion further?
I'd say most of the time, when you pull a permit like that, there's so many days, you gotta act upon that permit to keep it, okay?
Well, one thing I heard, too, was that it was open for children that were occupying it?
No, it's open, it's unsecured. Children can get in those buildings.
Okay, so they're not getting in now?
Vagrants can get in those buildings.
One else? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item Number Five, is Dangerous Building Complaint and Show Cause Hearing for 215 South Boyer Street. And is there an owner or a representative of the owner for South Boyers? And what we'll do, we'll go ahead and get some testimony from the city official, and then let you respond. Go ahead and state your name and address again for the record, please.
Kevin Black, City of Gallatin Building Codes Department.
The designee for the codes official tonight, correct?
That is correct.
Can you give some testimony as to the initial actions that the codes department took when this building was originally deemed dangerous and unsafe?
It was originally posted on 2/28/20, so February 28th, 2020.
And did you get any response from the owner at that time?
They received, we sent a letter, they received a letter on, and I got a response. I met the owner on the property, March 27th of 2020. And I explained to him, showed him why we declared it a dangerous building.
And have any actions been taken to correct those issues?
No, no, it is in the same condition.
And at that time, the codes department then asked the council to issue the show cause notice, correct?
That is correct.
And the owner is here tonight, so there was service, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And can you list for the council the reasons that the codes department has deemed this building to be dangerous and unfit for human occupation?
Because it has structural issues regarding the roof, rotting roof rafters, timbers, and basically, that's the majority of the problem with this building.
And the show cause notice specifically listed the following issues at this building: Structure is unsanitary and unsafe; cracked peeling paint and plaster; rubbish accumulation; broken and missing ceiling joists; broken and water-damaged roof rafters; broken, missing, and water-damaged window seals and screens; broken, missing, and water-damaged doors and frames; broken, missing, and water-damaged insulation and sheet rock; broken, and water-damaged eaves and overhangs; and broken, and water-damaged soffits. Is all of that correct?
That is correct.
And none of that has been repaired, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you have pictures that you would like to show this council tonight?
Once again, these are the recent pictures.
And this is 215 South Boyer Street. Okay. And in your opinion, can the property be repaired for less than 50% of its reasonable value?
No.
So based on your testimony and the record before the council, what is the recommendation relating to the building at 215 South Boyer Street?
We also recommend that this be dismantled and removed from the building.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll have the owner or the owner's representative come forward now. And can you, can you state your name and?
Counsel.
Address for the record?
I am Peter Odom, and I don't recognize that picture, but I do the others.
Okay.
I talked with Mr. Black some time ago. It's seemingly that there's been a lot of interest that's been generated in this property for a while, and every time the interest comes up, it seems that vandalism occurs to it. I repaired several issues with it. The front of it was quarter-inch plate glass, and it has been replaced with a shelter-proof plexiglass. I do have intentions to renovate the building. We're looking at putting a, another business in it. It will take a little time to do so. I'm currently working six and seven days a week, so I would have to get the interest of contractors. But I beg the council to give us some time to look at it and see if we can bring it up into other conditions. The roof is not damaged, other than you see around the faucet, I think it is. It is a slab with block structure, so the integrity of the building itself is still good. Cosmetically, it does need some repair. Vandal's leave trash around, we clean it up. it does need some repair. Vandal's leave trash around, we clean it up all the time, and it needs it again now. But the building is not deteriorated to the point of no return.
Do you think you could get any type of permit pulled in 30 days to begin work on the building?
Probably could, yes.
All right, does this counsel have any questions for the owner?
I'll make a motion, same thing, well, give him 30 days to pull permit on it. And then, you know, if it doesn't, doesn't, then Kevin come back to us and we'll, we'll send it on.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Congress.
Vice Mayor Fennell, any further discussion? All in favor of allowing the property owner 30 days to pull permits to begin to mitigate problems, say aye. Opposed, say no. Item number six, is dangerous building complaint and show cause hearing at 1023 West Avenue.
And is the owner or owner's representative present?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Black, here we go again. State your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Black, City of Gallatin Building Codes Department.
And you are the designee for the building codes official tonight, correct?
That is correct.
And what is the address of the property at issue in this show cause hearing?
1023, 1023 West Avenue.
All right, and can you give us some testimony?
1025, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
He's next on the list.
All right. 1023. Can, can you give us some te... All right, you can come on up. Will you give us some testimony as to what the codes department did when it originally deemed this building to be dangerous and unsafe for human occupation?
It was originally posted May 5th, 2017. And we sent out letters, and it was, the letters were received on March 7th, 2018.
Okay, and did you get any response from the owners at that time?
No, no responses were received that I can find.
Okay, and then the codes department asked this counsel to issue a show cause nor, show cause order, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that was done, and we have owners present tonight, correct? All right. And can you list the reasons to, for this counsel as to why this building has been deemed dangerous and unfit for human occupation or use?
It is a, let me clarify, it is a garage building. It is not a home. And it is dilapidated, unsafe, unsecured.
Okay. All right, and I'm going to read from the show cause notice, the issues that was deemed unsafe. It's broken and water damaged wall framing, broken and water damaged roof rafters, broken and water damaged roof decking, broken foundation walls, broken siding, broken and or missing window seals and screens, broken and missing eaves and overhangs, and broken and missing soffits. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And have any of those issues been repaired or corrected?
No, they have not been resolved.
You have any pictures that you would like to show this counsel?
Yes, these are recent pictures.
Okay, this is 1023 West Avenue.
And I have to apologize to Mr. Odom, that picture got duplicated.
Okay. Okay. Based on your testimony and the record before counsel, what is the recommendation for the property at 1023 West Avenue?
We recommend that this building be dismantled and removed from the property.
Okay, thank you. And if the owners or owner's representatives will come forward, please. Whoever wants to speak, or if both of you want to, that's fine, you can both come.
Okay, I'm, I'm not understanding the...
Ma'am, first, I need to get your name and address for the record. That's okay, we just have to get your name and address.
Teresa Saunders, Level 64 Spencer Avenue, representing Dorothy Vance.
Okay, if you will, try to speak into the microphone so that we can all hear you better. Thank you.
The, uh, the deal about the, a notice from 2017, the only thing that I've ever seen come across was for the lot being overgrown, which would, we would go take care of. I had never seen anything about the building needing upgrading or whatever. Now, as far as it being secured, yes, we've had lot, we, we nail up, it's closed up, and they, they break in again. We, we report it, it's been reported several times, that, that, I don't know if it's neighborhood kids or who it is. Now, as far as the, the building itself, I don't think that it's structurally unsound. I would, I didn't, I wouldn't even know that it was an option to have the inspector come out and show us, you know, just exactly what he's talking about. And I would love to set up an appointment for him to be able to point out just exactly what's wrong. Is, is that possible? Okay.
And Mr. Black has indicated, yes, that that's possible. And so are you asking for some additional time tonight?
Yes, please.
How much time do you need?
Well, depending on, on what the assessment is after he shows us what exactly is wrong, because a lot of it I'm not understanding.
Okay. And I, I will say, I don't know if we got this in the record through Mr. Black's testimony, but this building has been tagged and posted as a dangerous building, is that correct, Mr. Black?
Yes, that, that is correct. It has been tagged, and you can see on that door a notice, a yellow notice in the window.
Ms., Ms. Saunders?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is there anything else that you would like to say to counsel or ask counsel for?
Uh, not right at this point. Like, like I said, I was not even aware that the building was an issue. I, I knew that we had had reports on the grounds, that we had gone out there and cleaned up and cut brush, and, but as far as the building was concerned, no, I wasn't aware until this, this letter.
Okay.
So.
Okay, well, I'm going to open it up for counsel if you have any questions.
Are you, are you wanting to repair this building? And I guess that's the question that we need to know.
If it's repairable, yes. I, I think I would like to.
It, it might make sense to defer this one until he, she can...
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, sorry.
It's, it's a family business. It was our family business.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I don't mind, what we can do is if, I'll make a motion, we defer it for 30 days and let y'all look at it, and then Kevin can come back to us in 30 days and let us know what you want to do.
That, that would be right.
Okay, I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Anyone we should discuss further? All in favor of deferring, item number six, 1023 West Avenue, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. I had one aye.
Well, that's the only one, I think.
I heard Councilman Alexander. I'll say it passes unanimously. Item number seven, is a dangerous building complaint and show cause hearing at 1025 West Street. Ms. Tom McCollum.
All right, go ahead and give your name and address for the record and your title, please. Not your dress, your name and title, sorry.
Kevin Black, City of Gallatin Building Codes Department.
And you are the designee for the codes official tonight, correct?
That is correct.
All right, will you give testimony as to the initial attempts that codes department made once this building was declared or, or deemed dangerous and unfit for human occupation and use?
This building was originally posted May 15th, 2017. A letter was sent March 6th, 2018, and then another letter, March 4th, 2020.
Did you get any response from the owner at that time?
No, no response.
And then thereafter, the codes department asks counsel to issue a complaint for dangerous building and show cause notice, correct?
That is correct.
And we have the owner present, so obviously we did get service. So if you want to just go ahead and give counsel some testimony as to why the codes department deemed this building to be dangerous?
Once again, it is dilapidated, unsafe.
Okay, and I'm going to read from the complaint and show cause notice, the reasons that the building official gave for it to be deemed unfit for human occupation. The structure is unsecured, unsanitary and unsafe, rodent infestation, deteriorating accessory structure, garbage and rubbish accumulation, broken, missing and water damaged ceiling joists, broken wall framing, water damaged wall framing, broken roof rafters, water damaged roof rafters, broken and missing foundation walls, broken and missing siding, broken, missing and water damaged window seals and screens, and broken and water damaged doors and frames. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Have any of those issues been corrected or repaired?
No.
And in your opinion, can the property be repaired for less than 50% of the property's reasonable value?
No.
So based on your testimony and the record for the counsel, what is your recommendation for the property listed at 1025 West Avenue?
Uh, we are recommending, well, in light of meeting, seeing the owner tonight and him talking to me before the meeting, we're recommending dismantle and removal of the, of the building, or in lieu of that, the owner obtaining permits within 30 days to begin the renovations of this property.
Okay, and do you have any photographs that you'd like for counsel to view on this property?
Yes. And these, once again, are recent photos. They're not the original photos in your packet. But I think I've only got two. I don't believe I was able to get close enough to get anymore.
Okay, and there are other photographs in the packet, correct, that would have more detail?
The original photographs, yes.
All right. And would the owner or the owner's representative like to come forward? Go ahead and give your name and address for the record, please.
Isaac Zimmerley, member manager of Royal Development Group LLC, who's the owner of the property. I reside at 3694 Moon Bend Road, Chapel Hill, Tennessee. I would, I spoke to Kevin, is that right? I spoke to Kevin, head of the meeting, and I would ask the counsel and mayor if I could have a 30-day window to obtain necessary permits to renovate and repair the property. I'm in construction, I'm a general contractor. I know what the property needs. It, it needs a lot, but it is, the, the bones, you know, the skeletons of the building are good.
Okay.
That would be my desire, if y'all will allow me to do that.
Motion to give him 30 days to pull a permit?
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Any further discussion? All in favor of 30 days for this dangerous building complaint, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. One more. Item number eight, dangerous building complaint and show cause hearing at 614 Peach Valley Road.
And I would like to ask if there is an owner or owner's representative present, if you will come forward. We do have Mr. Black, we do have someone here on, on this property. All right, if you'll go ahead, Mr. Black, and give your name and title for the record.
Kevin Black, City of Gallatin Building Codes Department.
And you're here as the designee for the building codes official, correct?
That is correct.
And can you give this counsel some testimony as to what the codes department officially did once it was officially deemed dangerous and unfit for human occupation?
We originally posted this August 27th of 2020. We sent a letter, certified letter, August 23rd of 2021, and received no response.
Okay, and when you say that you posted it, I, I think everyone understands, but if you would just clarify, when you say you posted?
Uh, when we post it, we place a yellow dangerous building posting on the front of the, we tried to put it by the front door of the property as close as possible.
Okay.
In a visible location.
All right, and there, you said you had no response, and thereafter, the codes department asked the counsel to issue a show cause notice. And we do have an owner present, so we can admit that we, that we did get service. So I'd like for you now, just in, to give your reasons and give some testimony as to why the building has been deemed dangerous and unfit for human occupation.
At the time, it was unsecured, lot of accumulated debris, the roof was collapsing and damaged, ceiling inside was collapsing.
Okay, and the show cause notice gave the following reasons that the building has been deemed dangerous and unfit for human occupation or use. The structure is unsecured and unsanitary, has cracked and peeling paint, deteriorating accessory structures, garbage and rubbish, rubbish accumulation, broken and water damaged ceiling joists, broken and water damaged roof rafters, broken and water damaged roof decking, broken, missing and water damaged roof shingles, broken siding, broken and water damaged window seals and screens, broken and missing stairs and landings, broken and water damaged decks and porches, missing handrails and guardrails, broken and water damaged eaves and overhangs, broken and water damaged soffits, and no utilities. Is all of that correct?
That is correct.
And have any of those issues been corrected or repaired?
No, they have not.
Do you have any photographs that you would like to show the counsel for 614 Peach Valley Road?
I have a couple of recent photographs here to show the continued overgrowth at the property and roof condition.
Okay, do you have any other testimony that you want to give counsel at this time?
We would like to recommend that this property, again, be dismantled and removed, the building be dismantled and removed from the property.
In your opinion, can the property be repaired for less than 50% of its reasonable value?
No.
Thank you. And if the owner or owner's representative will come forward, please, if you'll state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Tommy Shaw Walker. I'm the daughter of Thomas Walker and Janice Walker. And the address is 263 Hollywood Boulevard. But y'all talking about 614, that was my dad's mother and father's house. And four years ago, he fell sick. He has a feeding tube.
Is this your father you're speaking of?
Thomas Walker. He has a feeding tube. And my dad always kept his properties up. He always went out there and kept the properties up. And the reason why is when he fell sick, he was in the hospital. And my mother also fell sick. So I was the one taking care of both of them. So me had to set out, not working for two years, and worry about my dad and my mother, because she had two toes, her diabetes and her heart condition. She died last year, and I have proof of that. I'm my dad's power attorney, so he's on bedridden, that's why I can bring him, wheelchair him in here. So I take care of my father. And I also am overseer of the, my little cousins that also live with my parents. So that's the reason why my father could not maintain this home, because he tried his best to keep it up. But March 4th, when we got the letter, I went out myself, me and my kids, went out and picked up all the debris, but what the letter said, by a certain time, we had 30 days. I went out and I have pictures. And he said he put a yellow thing at the door, and I have a picture of the front door, where you can clearly see, there's no yellow sign in front of this door. I have pictures all around the house and the lot, all pictures, when we went out there on March 4th, me and my kids to clean up. Now, y'all know this is recent, and it's trees, but if you would have seen the lot before, and everything else that I have in here, but the yellow of him saying, but see, my dad used to always get calls, because of the neighbors. It's certain, the neighbor next door to this house, say, these are the same problems. They're the only people on this road that always used to get letters. So I'm just here representing my father, knowing what's going on, knowing he always maintained this house, and knowing he always had problems with people just calling because he had stuff on the property. But it could be somebody next door that may not get calls, call it on, they got the same thing, but he would always mainly get the one called or getting letters. So we would go out there and we would go clean up, no big deal. We wouldn't hear nothing else. He didn't hear nothing, because my father has been sick. And I've been in and out of some centennial, my mom was there for two months before she passed. So it's kind of like, right now, my dad is at 263, and I'm taking care of him in the home. And that's just where we at right now. And I know the house, yeah, it, it probably do need to be demolished. Can I repair it? I don't have the same income as my father, I'm taking care of him. So whatever he put in it, I would like for him to get it out. But other than that, whatever y'all want to do with the house and the property, I'll motion for whatever y'all want to do. But I think what the work that he put in and his parents, he should get from it, whatever y'all want to do with it. So I'm just saying, me being his power attorney, whatever, and whatever he earned from this property and whatever, or whatever y'all want to do, demolish the house, you can demolish houses, nothing I can do with it. I can't sit here and say that we can rebuild it, or give me 30 days. I can't say that. Because right now, I'm at home taking care of my father. And that's... And that's all that I'm worried about. I'm just worried about, this is property, I can't look at all the properties that he had. I can't take care of all that right now, because I'm just worried about 263.
I understand.
So I'm here just to represent my father, because I know that house right there meant a lot. Because his mother, now, the people that gave him that house, my grandmother worked for that woman, and they got that house. So, you know, that house was able to live in. I was living in it before he fell sick. And so, you know, it's just that right now, over the years, four years, him being down, it's gonna look like it. But if you would have seen it before, it was not like that.
Right, I'm gonna open this up for council.
Sounds like she doesn't, I mean, she's fine with demolishing the house, but it sounds like the...
Because he owns two properties, it's two properties. It's not just one property. The land on the sidewalk, he had his garden and his farm and stuff, and it's still my granddaddy's old tractor that's still there, stuff that's still worth money, that's in the lot that I have pictures of, the whole lot, because that's what the letter was about. It wasn't just about the home. It was about the lot and all the rest that we cleaned up.
I know, I know your grandfather.
But I don't even know it to this situation. I'm just now thrown in it with my mom, dad, everything about my dad's property. So I'm just standing here, y'all let me know. I'm not trying to walk out here without a fight with my daddy, whatever he put in.
This is Thomas Walker, the concrete guy?
Yes.
Done work for me for 30 years.
Yes.
Tim was, Tim was his brother.
That's my, yes.
I know your grandparents, too. They, you own the property, correct?
Yes, my father still owns the property.
So, I mean, and she's saying that she can't, you can't afford it?
While my dad was down, I paid taxes.
You can't afford to tear it down?
Well, I can probably get the money up. I mean, I've done did everything by the grace of God. So I can't say what I can't do. Okay? I'm not gonna say what I can't do, because I've done did everything until now.
I just want to explain something to you, to make sure you understand, that if the city demolishes, that the city's gonna have a lien against that property. And so I want you to understand that.
Yeah, I'm getting better on this thing. And this is my first time, so y'all here to let me know, you know?
So it would, it would be better for your father and for you, if you are able to demolish it and to pay for that, it probably be better for you, you won't have a lien on the property.
How much does that run, may I ask? I don't even know how much to demolish it. I got a letter that's talking about $500. That's fine.
No, ma'am, it'll be much more than $500.
But that's fine. Money never has been an issue.
I'll make a...
If there's a will, there's a way.
I'll make a motion that we give her 30 days to see if she can come up with the money, or get somebody to bid it out, and if she can afford it. At that time, if you cannot, then we demolish the house, and then we'll have to put a lien on the property.
Well, let me say, I think because of the circumstance, we ought to give at least what we gave the rest, 60 days to demolish or do whatever. Yeah, to get a permit.
I was saying just 30 days, see if she can come up with the money, to see. But of course, I'll do whatever you want to do, John.
I know, we gave Mrs. Stewart 60 days.
Well, I think you need, just my opinion, I think you need to explore your options, because if you feel like it can be rehabilitated...
I just came up here alone. He has a sister that's still living there. Nobody's standing up here with me. Everything and every decision, from my mama being dead, to my dad laying in the bed, spent on me. So...
Well, I think you need to, like, discuss further, maybe with some friends or other family members, to figure out what options.
But I've been discussing with my dad, and I asked him the other day, when I got, when I showed him this letter. I said, is there anything out there that you may need, you know, that is valuable to you? And he's at the point where he can't really, he can speak.
Can't communicate.
But because of everything, he's just, you know, something that he cherished more, he just then gave it away. Like, do whatever. So I'm trying to make that decision, but when I go to my other family members, they don't know. They just look at me, because I've been handling all his business.
And I think if you could...
So I'm just looking for the right direction, so I won't waste of none of what he put in, or, you know, you know what I'm saying?
We're not gonna come down there.
Get something out of whatever.
The city's not gonna come out there and plow it down without...
Why? And I can understand that.
What my intent was, is just giving her 30 days to explore options.
That's what I came here for. I already knew it was gonna be demolished. I can't say that, huh?
It doesn't, I don't, I don't...
And I'm not saying that it can't. I mean, I've been thinking about, maybe somebody else maybe want to buy it, or do something with it, you know? That's where my head is, but I'm in the wrong direction, and the wrong people that I'm around, and who I need to talk to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, we probably shouldn't be counseling from up here, but yeah, I mean, their motion is to give you 30 days to get a permit to do something?
No, 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 we just said give her 30 days to decide.
Okay, it's good, 30 days to decide.
Then she can come back and, we give her more time, whatever we need to do.
We're essentially doing what we did with item number six.
Or I come up here directly, or I get a letter. How, how did it go? Like, just come before 30 days?
You need to work with the codes department.
Keep in touch with Mr. Black, and they may be able to help and advise you as well. And just maybe by having this discussion public, maybe some other people might, you know, be interested in figuring out some partnership, or, I mean, if you're open to selling it, somebody might be interested in that, too.
Yeah, there's been a lot of little letters come to the house, of like little postcards saying people want to buy.
Don't, don't, yeah, don't do that.
I'm just looking for, you know, most of people, they knew my dad did tractor, like, like his agriculture, you know, like, he raised tobacco. So it's kind of like concrete. It's a lot of things that my dad, it's worth something, and it's there, and I don't know what to do with it, but there's a lot of people that have passed through there and then said they wanted it, you know? That's all, that's just where it leads me at right now.
Well, Ms. Walker, I got a great deal of respect for your mom and daddy, because I grew up with them. I know them both. Any way at all that I can assist, maybe contact somebody to help you with this matter, please contact me, and I'll be glad to do all I can to help you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, a second, to give you 30 days, essentially a deferral. Follow up with Mr. Black, he'll give you his phone number, and then, you know, we'll take it from there.
Okay.
You take care of your dad in the meanwhile. Okay, a motion, a second, all in favor? Please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Okay, 30 days on that one. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Item number nine is second reading on ordinance 02110-62, Councilman Hayes.
It's an ordinance to redistrict the five voting districts for the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, based on the 2020 United States Census. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Opening the floor for any discussion? Anything? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02110-62. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. New council districts are approved. I think Ms. Ashley is going to be impressed. She's the election commissioner. I'm moving along, trying to keep everyone energized. Item number 10 is second reading on ordinance 02110-64, Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds for the amount of $635,000 for a brand-new fire engine. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Fan. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02110-64. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is approved unanimously. Item number 11 is first reading on ordinance 02110-65, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance of City Gallatin, Summit County, Tennessee, rezoning 9.982 acre partial from R40 Low Dynasty Residential District to MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, approving the preliminary master development plan for Nichols Place, Phase Two and Three, located south of Nichols Lane and east of Ferguson Boulevard. Authorizing vision to be indicated on official zoning, unless repelling conflict of ordinance is providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilwoman George. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02110-65. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously. Pass this first reading. Item number 12 is first reading on ordinance 02110-66, Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds from sale of recyclables in the amount of $18,925.10, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02110-66. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Pass, the first reading does pass unanimously. Item 13 is first reading on ordinance 02110-65, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an appropriating fund from sale of street signs in the amount of $11,822.10, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 02110-67. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number 14 is first reading on ordinance 02110-68. And Vice Mayor Fennell, you want to take this?
Yes, Mayor. This is a...
Councilman question mark, so I think she failed to fill that one in, but yes.
This is an ordinance appropriating the American Recovery Plan Act funds in amount not to exceed $1.5 million for essential worker hazard pay. That motion, I mean, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Overton. I do want to remind you all that that money has come to the state from the feds. They're supposed to get it to the cities within 30 days. So second reading will not necessarily be in two weeks. It could well be four weeks from now. But my hope is, is that as soon as that money comes to our city, and we have possession of it, so that we can then allocate it, then we would pass that on second reading, and hopefully get checks to our employees prior to Christmas. I see no reason we shouldn't.
Good.
I'm excited about it. I appreciate your support of it so very much. So a motion, a second. This is first reading on ordinance 02110-68. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number 15 is resolution R2110-68, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin for Baywood Point, Phase 4A. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I've got one discussion. Both of these first reading and resolution are both the same. Is that supposed to be that way?
What now?
You know, one is O, one is R.
4B.
Who, what?
Oh, I heard that.
Do you understand what I'm saying? The numbers?
You're talking about the ordinance and the resolution have the same number?
No.
No?
6A and 4A and 4B.
2001-68, and the next one down is?
Oh, you're talking about...
One's an ordinance and one's a resolution.
Okay, I understand. I just want to be sure we pointed that out.
I think we're, I think we're all good. So, a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor of resolution R2110-68, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is approved unanimously. Item 16 is resolution R2110-69, Councilman Hayes.
Resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin for Baywood Point, Phase 4B. Motion to approve.
I will second that.
I have a motion, my Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion? Okay, this is resolution R2110-69. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item 17 is resolution R2210-71. Councilwoman Love is not here this evening. Councilwoman George, would you take this, please?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution updating debt management policy. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? All right, this is resolution R2210-71. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item 18 is resolution R2110-72, Councilwoman George.
Yeah, Mayor. This is a resolution establishing investment policy. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman Alexander. It's our finance department updating lots of our policies. So, any discussion on this? This is resolution R2110-72. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number 19 is resolution R2110-73, Vice Mayor Fennell.
This is a resolution temporarily adjusting certain rates of pay. Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Fan. I have a feeling that this is for a discussion, and so I'd say let's jump in. I know that I've heard, I think I've talked to most council members this week, not all, but I've talked to most. And there's a lot of concern, and I feel like that there is an understanding in a couple, or there's a lack of understanding in a couple of departments as to kind of the current status of the economy, and of the workforce, and the situations that we're facing. And I just want to remind you that I made this proposal because I feel like we are in close to a crisis situation, in that we don't have employees to attend to essential duties related to our citizens' health and safety. I mean, no one is in danger at this point, but there's such competition in the workforce for a lot of jobs, and the ones that we are, you know, so worried about not having enough people to do, have to do with our utilities, have to do with our garbage, have to do, of course, with our police and fire, and that's where we're having challenges hiring, and largely because the wages in those departments are so very low. And we do have, you know, we do have a pay study getting ready. I mean, Flood's already been working on it. We won't have the results until the spring, but I don't think it's difficult to look around any community in this country and see what starting wages are. I mean, they have changed significantly in a very short period of time. And so while, you know, we did a pay study back in, I guess, 2014, and we adjusted everybody's pay to be competitive in the market, and we have some years done a cost of living, some years we've done a smaller one, this year we did a full one. We've done, of course, staff increases each year, but the market has been so impacted by COVID, early retirements, all kinds of crazy things going on in the market. I wish, I think we all wish we could figure out why there isn't more, there aren't more people in the workforce. So what I was trying to do is come up with a solution that could mitigate a short-term problem, that would give some of our departments a better opportunity at hiring and retaining some of their lower-wage employees. So that was, that was the thought between the proposal that we made last week. I've talked at length with our finance director. We've talked about, you know, what some other alternatives might be. There is actually an employee, I don't know what employee, they shared with Ms. Nichols, she shared with me, but I thought it was a very good suggestion, that we could look at potentially taking all employees who are below a step five, and temporarily elevating them to a step five until the pay study's complete. The thing I don't want to get into is elevating employees who the pay study would then show were out of market on the high side. I think, you know, a couple years ago, we did a public safety pay study, I think this was in 18 and 19, and it came back showing, you know, some different issues. We did make some adjustments in the police department to address those over there. That was about compression and people not wanting to advance up. And then the recommendation of the fire department was that it was really the lower-wage employees, the firefighters, that weren't being compensated properly. Those in the higher brackets were actually kind of on the high side in the market at that time. Again, things have changed so much. We're in circumstances now where cities are just, you know, hitting problems as they occur. We have always been very responsible and tried to do pay studies to make sure that all of our employees are compensated fairly, but, you know, we're on, we are in unusual circumstances. And I speak frequently about supply and demand, particularly when it comes to housing, but we're in the same situation with employees. And when you have certain positions that are in higher demand by more sectors, the price of them goes up. And so that's what I'm looking at. So anyway, I was talking about one of the options that Ms. Nichols brought to me, that actually came from an employee, would be to take all employees in the city who are below a step five and elevate them to a step five. You know, that's gonna cause hard feelings for people who, not elevate them to a step five, elevate their pay to a step five. They would still, when the pay study happens, they would still be adjusted accordingly. So that would help us on the hiring side, that would help us in the retention of those employees that haven't been with us very long, because that would, you know, substantially increase some of those lower-wage jobs. So that's one option. It actually has less of a, less of a fiscal impact than the original proposal that I made. However, I do think it will impact some departments that probably don't have the budget capacity, because they don't have openings like the four departments that we spoke about last week, but we can certainly address that in time. So that would be an option. Certainly, you know, we are committed to getting this pay study done. Another option would be to wait until the pay study's complete, and just help, you know, particularly police and fire and utilities and public works, just, you know, folks who are trying to do right by you when we get this pay study back. If there's any way that we can make it retroactive, for those of you who have been, you know, significantly undercompensated, we will do our best to do that. But we can't commit to that, because we don't know the fiscal impact that the pay study's gonna have on us. So there's an option. The other thing that I'm going to put out there as a potential option for hiring, and I would never do this, in normal circumstances, in normal days, I'm always against it. I think it's a terrible, terrible practice. But because we're doing the hazard pay supplement for all of our employees, I think that... I think that we could justify actually doing a hiring bonus. So, that's another option that you might consider.
Hiring bonus of what type of, what type of bonus?
Just, I just, I mean, we can structure it. A lot of people are doing hiring bonuses where you get so much at start and so much after six months or a year. I, I don't think that we can justify doing anything beyond fifteen hundred dollars as a hiring bonus. And I honestly don't know if that would make a difference for someone in some of these, you know, firefighter, police officer, one or two positions, drivers in public works. I don't know that it would. But, I mean, it's something that we could put out there that not everybody's doing.
Mayor, I feel, I feel good about the move that we're trying to make, trying to give some raises and whatnot. I know these are challenging times right here that we've never been through before. And I do feel that we need to do something. However, I'll be really thankful for when the pay study does arrive and then we have an opportunity to address and make sure everybody is, and every position is well noted in the city. So, I would like to sit back and listen to the options that Paige put out there. I'd like to see what you guys think, and hopefully we can come up with a solution and move forward on this.
I mean, it's?
I think the recommendation would put this back in committee, that we defer it to committee next week. So, we can talk about several options, because I agree with Sean. I think there's a lot of options out there we need to talk about.
And so, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton.
Well, he's, he's wanting to stop the?
I don't want to stop anything. I'm all for it.
No, but he's saying not, we're not, we're not voting on, I guess we're deferring until next.
And I think Councilman, Vice Mayor Fennell was actually putting out there that he wanted to hear some discussion. So?
I was wanting to try to move on something tonight if we could.
I'm okay. I mean, I want to do it a hundred percent.
You know, get some of this money out and get some of this money going. I was fine with what we discussed the last week, but I certainly don't want to step on any toes, and we might have left some people out. And that's what I was saying is I would like to see what the rest of this council thought for what proposals you put out there this evening to see if we could move on something.
I mean, we, we, we are in, like I keep saying, very, very unusual circumstances. I never want to do anything without having a pay study. You know, I've had one unhappy department head. I've only really heard from one department that's unhappy with the proposal because they felt like they were excluded. The rest of the departments seem to understand the circumstances related to those other departments. But, you know, they said, well, you should, you know, you should have done the pay study two years ago. I said, we were planning to do a pay study two years ago, and COVID happened. And that was not the time to do the pay study. I'm a little, I mean, I don't think our data is going to be the best because of the current circumstances, but we have no choice at this point. But, you know, you think back to early twenty-twenty when we didn't know if we were going to be able to keep employees, and we were going through contingency plans where, okay, who would we keep working if we, you know, the government shut down? I mean, we were really trying to figure out. We didn't know what was going to happen. And so that was not the time to embark on a pay study. And, and, and then times have changed even so much since then. So, I really think a pay study at this point will actually benefit our employees more so than, say, we had done it in twenty-eighteen. I mean, we did it in fourteen, so really twenty, twenty-fourteen passed it in fifteen. So, really, like, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty would have been the right time to do it again, but.
Now, Mayor, if we move everybody to five, sorry, if we move everybody to five, as you say, as you recommending, this list that you gave us last week, will it be all these people and more?
No, it won't be those people. This will only be the low-wage employees.
How much difference will it make in the fire and police department on retaining and keeping employees?
Well, I, I?
That's what we're concerned about.
I definitely think that all of those departments that we're concerned about, it would help with the attraction, the recruitment, and the retention. Because I think, you know, what's just making us so sick is the people that are coming in here, staying a year or two, and then leaving somewhere else for more money. So, Ms. Homicoli?
If you, if you had a motion to defer, are you withdrawing that motion before we move forward?
If anybody wants to deal with it right now, I withdraw it. I mean, if that's what everybody wants to do, I'm not wanting to put anything off. I just know there's a lot of discussion, and we can sit here all night and discuss it if these guys want to. I don't care.
And another thing, Jimmy's got to get going because, you know, you brought up like three different options.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We don't have any idea about the financial impact or anything of that. So, if y'all could get that to us to let us look at it, to see, you know, those options.
But one thing you did say, Paige, would be fiscally, it would be cheaper on us to do the five percent. Well, I don't want to promise the fire department or police department something, then all of a sudden start pulling back on what we're offering to get them.
Well, the proposal last week would be utilizing existing funds in those departments. Those departments have existing funds because they have so many vacancies. So, it would not be any new money allocated to cover that. If we went citywide and took everyone, you know, that was below step five, there probably would be a fiscal impact to some departments because they don't have any openings. But, you know, if you want to look at that across the way, you know, that, that would be an option. The impact, let me tell you. If we bumped all positions less than a step five, and these are all hourly employees, not salaried employees. If we bumped them all to a step five, it would impact one hundred and ninety employees. The cost would be four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars. If we did what we proposed last week, the cost would be six hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And that impacts two hundred and twenty-three employees.
I guess my question would ask, and it's like, I've got some calls from some firemen and other folks that are officers. And, you know, their concern is that, you know, we're going to bump some, some of the newer guys up to a certain scale. And how far spread would that be for those guys versus the officers that's there now?
Yeah, when Ms. Nichols ran the numbers on that, she did look to make sure that there was no compression where nobody would be moving up over a supervising officer. And, and, you know, that is always a hard pill to swallow. It's a hard pill to swallow when you have a pay study. Because, I mean, I recall specifically about the fire department, and I don't know at which level, I don't know if they were talking VCs, I don't know if they're talking captains, lieutenants, I don't know. But, but I remember that they said that the issue was with the firefighters, not with the higher positions. The higher positions were on the high side, the lowers were on the low side.
Like, just say a lieutenant in the fire department. I mean, I'm not sure what all their ranges are right now, but?
Between fifty-two and sixty-five is what the?
And what would this step five bring them up to? To not, not a engineer, but a regular firefighter starting, what would that bring them up to? If you started, or if you moved these guys to step five, what would that be?
A firefighter to set five, I don't know if Ms. Nichols has those numbers with her.
And the reason I'm asking that is because, you know, some of them have even mentioned to me that there's such a small gap there that it discourages them a lot because, you know, and I've tried to explain to them that we are going to address them. We just got to get a few more months in till we can get this study back. But, but I understand their concerns that?
Well, I mean, here's a number I think will compel you. Entry firefighter right now, twelve twenty-nine an hour.
It's what?
Twelve twenty-nine an hour.
And if we take them up to step five, what is it?
We don't expect the pay study to be back.
Not till spring.
Early, late.
Does anybody know what a step five would be? Chief?
For the firefighter first responder, step five is thirteen fifty-four an hour.
And they're making what now, twelve something?
Uh, level one would be twelve twenty-nine an hour. Level two is twelve fifty-nine. Level three is twelve ninety. Four is thirteen twenty-three. And then the five is, again, thirteen fifty-four.
I'm absolutely confident that the pay study is going to tell us we have to get exactly, you know, at least that far. So, that's why, that's why my focus is so much on these lower-wage jobs because that's where we're so challenged with attraction and retention. And, I mean, the last thing I want to do is put some kind of temporary pay structure in place where the pay study then comes back and says, oh, you have to lower their pay. I mean, that would be terrible. And so, I, I feel like, you know, in all the, the chaos that was created last week by a couple of people, I don't think the focus is where it should be on that, you know, the city's allocating one point five million dollars for hazard pay supplements for every single employee. But our goal in trying to address some of these low-wage jobs is to have the people here to do the job, but it's also to make the jobs of those people who are already here easier. Because right now, they're taking on more duties. They're, they're training so, you know, they're training constantly. They're trying to pick up the slack because there aren't the people there that need to do the job.
My concern is I just want to be sure we pay, we're going to give them enough to make a difference. I mean, you know, fifty cents or a dollar might not make a difference because you know what the county doing and everybody else. I just want to be sure that we're doing enough to make a difference.
I agree with you.
These guys are in a, these guys are in a serious situation at the police and fire department especially. You know, we need to, we need to be able to hire some people and retain what we do have. And that's the ones I'm concerned about is, is being able, being able to be sure we get up enough that they still don't want to leave and go to the county or go to the other departments because that's our problem right now. And I just want to be sure we're not just putting a Band-Aid on it that, you know, we're trying to solve the problem until our pay study comes back.
I agree with you, Jimmy. You know, one thing that really bothers me is, is the money that we put into the firemen and we put into the police department. And like Chief Andy and Mr. Phil Sorrell said, I mean, what was it, seventy thousand dollars? What it really costs us per person, and I hate, I hate to lose these guys.
Because, you know, it takes six, seven months to get a police officer up and ready to go in his own car.
Takes years to get them.
But I mean, to get them ready to go in their own car, it's six or seven months. And, you know, if we'd done something today, it's still going to be, you know, next year before they get ready to go in their own car. And I just want to be sure we're not continuing losing folks, and we're just putting a Band-Aid on it. That's my only problem.
Well?
And overtime now causes a short sale.
Oh, yeah. Not every department, but all, I mean, the, the ones where we're so challenged, certainly they have a lot of overtime. And that is like some advantages for different positions and different arenas. I know that I've talked to, I've not spoken with Mr. De Priest about this or Mr. Kellogg. I have spoken to Chief Beaman and Chief Andy. Chief Beaman was going to look at it some. Chief, um, Andy had contemplated it. I don't know that they have looked at all the options to know what they think will work best for them. Let me throw this out. It's an option too, potentially. We do have a work session next week. We could schedule a special call meeting if you wanted to.
I would love it.
I'm fine with that.
I would love to talk about it, and let's come up with a, with a good option and not just put a Band-Aid on it. So, I just think?
Well, I think I, I take some, I take some offense to that. I think they're all good options.
I don't mean that to bite, Mayor. You know, I mean, we, we the ones that get the phone calls. And I just want to be sure that we're doing the right thing and, you know, we're not making a hasty decision. And I, and I also, I'm concerned about the officers that's there now that's, you know, that's lieutenant, sergeant, whatever. I'm concerned about losing them as well because, you know, if we're not careful, they're going to be applying for jobs and they're going to be leaving. So, I just want to be sure we're protecting all of them.
Mayor?
That's the way to do that.
The great competition is for those entry-level positions, and that's also where we've had a lot of challenges in retention. And I think, you know, that some people that don't understand the whole, you know, the whole supply and demand economics, they take offense saying, you know, that, that it's, you know, that there's, somehow I went in here and picked the people I wanted to benefit. And I don't have any idea who the people are. I know what the positions are. I know where the challenges are. You can tell that one proposal of them affected one hundred and ninety employees, that one affected two hundred and twenty-three. It's about getting the work done for our citizens and how we can make that happen. I would never, ever, ever, ever go down this road if we weren't in highly unusual circumstances.
Mayor, I know, I know.
Can we set up that special call meeting for next weekend? Because it's very important that we do something for all, I'm still leaning toward all the employees.
Yeah, and, and Councilman Alexander, with all due respect, there is no way that we could fiscally do something for all employees beyond the hazard pay supplement, which is already one point five million dollars that we're committing. There is no way that we could fiscally, and in my opinion responsibly, do something for all employees because, you know, when you get in those high-wage jobs, you give them, you know, say, say a ten percent increase. Oh, my goodness, the fiscal impact would be insane for the city. And no pay study is going to support those increases, and we'd have to be drawing back, and that wouldn't make sense either.
I understand.
The citizens won't be happy with that either.
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would have to increase revenue to be able to support that.
I understand what you're saying, but my point is that all the employees of the city, the three hundred something whatever we have, every one of them is very important to me.
Exactly. I mean, and, and again, we're, we are dedicating one point five million dollars to do hazard pay supplements for every single employee in the city. What we're trying to do is address those critical infrastructure areas where we can't attract and/or retain people because they're very low-wage jobs. And, and, you know, the people with the higher-wage jobs, certainly the turnover is nothing like the lower-wage jobs because there's too many opportunities, again, supply and demand.
Mayor?
I don't have the magic wand, but if I did, there would be nobody in the city making less than fifteen dollars an hour period from the janitorial up. That, that's?
Well, I mean, that's what the market, the market demands even beyond that at this point, so.
I know this is not only weighed heavy on all of us, but also you. And I know you thought about it every day. If you have, what would you like to, if we would do something tonight, what would you like to be, see done?
I, I really think the most prudent course would be to let particularly those four departments where they're having biggest challenges figure out what will have the greatest success for them. And then, you know, hopefully they would all agree. And then, you know, share that information with us, figure out potholes associated with, with what that preference would be of theirs, and then move forward with doing something. And because I do feel like expediency is important, I would like to see you guys go ahead. Notice for a special call meeting. Can we, I mean, if we talk about it tonight, if we post on our website and social media and all that, we could technically do it after our work session next week.
It's our, you know, it don't matter, that's fine with me, but is our work session, you think, will be light next week?
I have no idea. Probably not. Mr. King?
We have nothing, Mayor.
Really?
No, nothing for next week's work, work session.
That'd probably be a good one.
That's fine. I mean, just to get it done, let's get it done. So, do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, somebody needs to make a, somebody needs, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll draw my motion.
I don't think he, he had a motion. He withdrew it. I think the proper motion at this point would be?
You got a motion to approve?
Oh, oh, thank you. You're right. Sorry.
We would not have to withdraw that motion. If somebody makes a motion to defer, that takes precedence.
I'll make a motion then to?
Defer it to the?
Yes, ma'am. To the work session.
Work session.
And have a special call meeting.
And have a special call meeting. Thank you.
Okay, second by, a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Overton. More discussion, anybody? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. I thank you for your thoughtful contemplation of this. And officers and firefighters, I don't know if you, I know I've seen a lot of officers. Thank you for being here and helping us create a, create a solution. Difficult time for you all, so thank you for what you do. That concludes the regular agenda. Moving now to other business. Anyone?
Mayor, I got to clarify one thing. We had a speaker that come up at the first of the meeting tonight and said, we're not concerned. We hadn't done anything about this. And, you know, over the last couple of years, we have made some adjustments in several departments. But that same speaker is also the one that wanted to cut our 401K for our city employees, and it's not right, okay? So, I just want to be sure that everybody understands. We have not just sat here and not done anything. We've made a lot of adjustments with a lot of employees and their salaries in the last couple of years. And I think we need to make a lot more, but I'm saying we have made a lot in the last two years.
Well, and I think some of that happens in the budget process, so it may not be as apparent if you're not really engaged with the budgeting. When you, you know, you see those numbers change, but you don't know what. But yes, we have, we actually have taken the advice of, really, it was that, that public safety pay study that was done. We didn't, we weren't able to do it that first year because we were in the middle of COVID, but we did the second year. And we have also addressed positions in some particularly challenging situations.
We took some positions and made some other positions and money increases and everything. So, we've done a lot in the last couple of years, but we need to do a lot more. But I just want to clarify that because I don't want the public to understand we've sat here and done nothing. So, thank you.
Anyone else with any other business?
I wanted to address something on the short-term rentals that, um, it was mentioned that the square footage of these one bedrooms were 12 by 12 or something. And, uh, these rooms are a little bit less than that, it's like 11 by 12. So I think that's something we need to-
Yeah, I think that's fair when, when that goes, that will come to second reading and certainly then, um-
Okay.
At that point.
Any other other business? Ms. Nichols? I would like to request for next week, if someone has a specific idea in mind, that they would let me know beforehand because it'll take a little calculating depending on how, um, robust it is, so. Thank you, Ms. I'm so glad you weren't getting up here to correct something that I said incorrectly.
Mayor, can I mention one thing?
Yes.
I just want to let everybody know that, um, Mr. Collins from Portland, um, that's done a lot for our county, passed away yesterday and everybody keep him in your prayers, his family. He's, he's been a, a big success for Sumner County over the years for, for everybody, so.
Certainly-
See, I'm sorry.
Certainly an icon in our community.
Larry Collins.
Oh, he's from Portland, but I think all of Sumner County feels like they know Mr. Collins, so. Thank you for that, Councilman. Okay. Now we will move on to public recognition on non-agenda related items. If you have something that's not on the agenda, you may come forward and speak this time. Again, give us your address. You have five minutes to speak. Um, do not speak disparagingly. Address your comments to the council and the mayor, please.
Oh, good evening, council and, and people. My name is Patrick Reeners, live at 317 Malone Drive in Gallatin. And you guys beat me to it, but yeah, this month is domestic violence month. Uh, usually don't follow missing people, but, uh, this Gabby Petito thing kind of, uh, turned my head a little bit and I went into looking and I seen how, you know, when people come together, they can make it happen, you know? Some blogger saw a van and that's where they ended up finding her body. Worked out well when people come together, but I definitely think it's something that people hide inside and if, you know, you, you feel like you've been, you know, abused or something, it's okay to come out and like tell a family member. Because, you know, usually people don't act out of contact, context, like they usually keep the same passion when they come up and speak and like some people speak for themselves and some people might be looking to speak for other people. So on that subject, I'll touch, on the race subject, I did help a little bit talk with county, county people about the, the pay for, you know, dispatch and other things. And I haven't researched any of the pay, but the way I look at it is, I agree, you know, if, if, if the putting on blast of people is on, I, I think it should be on. I mean, like, I don't think Southwest pays their employees enough. You know, I, you know, I, I think a lot of companies don't pay their employees enough. You know, I would be willing to pay more in taxes. You know, I would, you know, like y'all, maybe to possibly tell companies they could pay a little more because we need to pay our, our, our people. You know, get, get the money. I'm willing to pay more in taxes. I mean, other speakers are probably, if they mention they're not getting enough and you guys don't have the money, let the citizens pay them more. They're the ones protecting us. So, you know, get the citizens' opinions if they're willing to just to say, hey, raise our taxes a little bit. You know, it's, it's, it's for everybody to work together. I mean, you can't rob from Peter to pay Paul and, um, worry about everything. So I'm on for it. The domestic violence thing is on, putting on blast is on. I think, you know, it's, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander and, and I really think you people done hard. I, I don't know the pay scale thing, but I got offered a job the other day for like 12 bucks an hour at a parts house. You know, I know the fire department, you know, they risk their lives and everything and I looked at the schedules way back a couple of years ago and they like work 24-hour shifts, so sometimes they're getting paid while they sleep too. So I think if we look at a whole nutshell of some issue before we go talking about it, these guys getting paid, you know, maybe 15 bucks an hour to sleep. Yeah. If they're not making enough, they should because we don't want them to run somewhere else, but, you know, I, I haven't spoken on it because I haven't researched it. I will do a little bit of research. We're organizing a humongous protest against Southwest and, uh, that's into work, so I'll be busy a little bit, but I will be looking into the pay structure and try to talk to citizens about coming together to maybe use the citizen power and money to help pay our cit, our citizen helpers. Like the ones that are going to come when, you know, uh, someone's beating their wife or something and risk their life getting shot at. So props to the good cops, props to the fire department, props to you guys. And, um, I guess I'm gonna just have to come to every meeting. Because if you guys can't correct yourselves, you guys need help. And that's what citizens are for. So remember, if you see anybody that has signs of domestic violence, you know, say something to them. Maybe bringing out that initial statement, they might lose that barrier and they might confide in you. It could be instant. Like, how'd you know? Like someone else knew and like maybe they blame themselves. I don't know, I'm not a psychologist. But I, I might need some citizens' help. Last thing, if I wanted to protest like on a road, like Long Hollow Pike with like a megaphone, would I, would I need, you know, we would obviously want to shut the road down, but I would want to know, you know, how many people I could have protesting there on the shoulder, where we could do it. And, um, who would I talk to about that? The police department? Because, I mean, I got lawyers for what the signs will say and everything, but I, I want to know how and which I can do it. Don't laugh.
And you have to get a permit and that'd be with, um, Judge Kitchell.
Really? Ms. Kitchell? Okay. All right, thank you, guys. Give more money, though. I agree.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda related items? Now would be your time.
My name is Cam Patel. I live on 421 Woodlands Drive. And I'm here to request to, Gallatin is growing and we got only six liquor store and I think we need a couple more. And I did survey around, uh, like Lebanon, they got 17 liquor store and they are a smaller town than us. The Franklin, Tennessee, they got 29 license and they have 17 liquor store. They have still 12 opens. And Cookville, they got eight. They are smaller than us too. So it's my humble request.
I, I, I appreciate your comments. Ms. Kitchell actually brought, um, some information to me. She's still gathering some other information. We do plan to put it on a work session in the future.
Thank you, ma'am.
Because a lot of people want liquor stores in Gallatin, so, um, and years ago-
Gallatin is growing. Like I've been here since 2004 and cannot stop. I think we need to stop here, you know, but-
But Ms. Kitchell does plan for us to put on a work session the coming weeks. Um, she actually couldn't be here this evening, but we are going to at least, um, present to the council the numbers and how it compares to other cities and, and also, you know, what the tax implications-
That's what she told me, Cam. Before you come to the meeting, just survey around the city, you know, what's going on all over the city, you know? So that's what I call like at least four or five different city and ask them what they have population and how many license they have. But most license they have in Lebanon, 17, all active, all package store.
Okay. Well, you might share that information with her and save her some time and your comments this evening will prime this council well.
And, and I own the like several convenience store and one liquor store and I got four convenience store in Gallatin.
You have what?
Four convenience stores in Gallatin.
Four convenience stores.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else with, um, public comment under non-agenda related items?
Council, Michelle Juventz. I'm at the same address as before. Um, I guess I'm going to address all of you, but specifically Councilman Overton. Um, what you just mentioned a few minutes ago was inaccurate and I just feel like I needed to clarify something about what you said. Um, about you were referring to someone who spoke earlier who wanted to, um, cut the 401Ks of the employees. And that is not accurate and I don't think you should get away with telling a lie. Um, what was actually said, and it's on record and you can go back and look at it if you want to, um, it was in regards to, um, during the budget, um, during the COVID budget, the pandemic budget is what it was called at the time. That previous week, um, Mayor Brown, you had hinted at raising our taxes, raising the citizens' taxes. Um, Pascal, actually what he said-
That would misrepresent what I said either.
Um, I, I said that, that you hinted at it and it was not during a, it was, it was during one of your, um, yeah, you did. So, um-
I don't remember that.
Hey, this is not a back and forth. We all should be quiet and let her have her comments, but no accusations, no individuals to be called out.
Okay, so what Pascal said was if you were going to raise the citizens' taxes, then he proposed putting a one-year pause on the 401Ks. So that was an if and it was a pause. So do not say that he wants to cut the employees' 401Ks because that is inaccurate and is not true.
Yep.
And I don't appreciate you calling out my husband because he's going to run against you.
Yeah.
So, so don't start doing that on public record and, and saying things that aren't true about him because I don't think that that is, um, I don't think it's allowed to say disparaging things about citizens that are inaccurate on public record. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda related items?
My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in Gallatin. I rise today to bring up a few new, uh, ideas that might be of great interest to all folks. First thing is, we're going to talk about what we're going to complain about. Number one, we need to have a couple of light poles put in behind the, uh, containers for our, um, recycled material over at the recycling center. If you go over there, Leighton or whatever, you have a problem there with too, not enough light behind the, the venues. I would suggest we get the, uh, lighting department, electric department put up a couple of nice pole lights out there. And what you might want to do as you do that, think in terms of that going to be the, uh, Maple Street extension and actually be, be, become a, uh, uh, light for, for the roadway eventually. Now that's looking to the future. Second thing is, we need to make sure that we have an opportunity to put a one-way sign over on Pay Street between council and Blithe. The street is too narrow, 15 feet wide. I brought this to your attention before. And, uh, put a one-way street sign in there making, uh, Pay Street go out toward Blithe Street. We have big trucks go in there all the time. There's a warehouse back there and it's unsafe. It's cheap. Signs are cheap. I asked my buddy back there, he knows all about it. He's, he can handle the signs. Third thing is, I want to thank the folks that are sitting in front of me tonight for your good work. We need to be more proactive instead of reactive. And as we go into the future, what we're, what we're dealing with with the pay and all that sort of thing is sort of reactive, but at the same time, you're being active. I want to thank you all for your good work and especially I would like to, uh, acknowledge that Mayor Brown is, is the tops in this part of the country. It's been proven. And, uh, in fact, she got an award for it here a while back. So, uh, we, uh, have to tip our hat to you, madam, because you do a wonderful job here. And the catch I have to say is, we've got 44,000 people in this city. Everybody has responsibility to make this thing go. And if we don't pull together, we're going to have a problem. So with that being said, I also would like to take this opportunity, since I'm the last one here and Mayor allowed me to, uh, I have a presentation I would like to make this time. Is that okay, Mayor?
Minute thirty-eight. Can we help you?
I asked for more time.
Well, you asked for more time when your time is up.
When he got out of your office? Give him two of them, not one. Two is what you get. Because you do a good job too. Brother Fan got him a, got him a, a wonderful, brother Fenton got him an award here a while back too. I know it was because he gave out all those, uh, lifesavers from times gone by. And, and, uh, we do appreciate what he brings to the table. He gives, uh, a wonderful educator's venue of ideas to the, to our community and we can put him to work getting mechanics fixed up for our, our many garages and so forth to where they're certified and be able to do the job that people need in this community. And we thank you very much, Brother Fenton. Thank you, sir. Thumbs up.
Mr. DeBoer, you had 22 seconds left. Uh, Mr. Fenton, we did mention your award a couple of times you weren't here. Um, for those who don't know what Mr. DeBoer was referencing, he was named the economic, economic developer of the year by the state association. So high honor and, uh, good indication that Gallatin is being represented well.
I didn't, I didn't know.
I took your last few minutes, seconds.
I, I would crave to be able to get something here in a few minutes. He needs to get something.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda related items? Seeing no one, public recognition on non-agenda related items is closed.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. All in favor, please say aye. This meeting is adjourned. I hope you all have a lovely evening. Be safe, be kind, good night.